Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regularly scheduled council meeting. This evening, to lead us in the pledge, we have Cup Scout Troop 238 and Den Leader John Garlandhouse, who's going to have the troop come on up and lead us in the pledge. So come on up and -- Come on up and front here.
Good. We're about there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The roll, please.
Mayor Ziegler.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Beagle.
Here.
Councilmember Gottschall.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Leader.
Here.
Councilmember Resnick.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Coram present.
Thank you. Any changes to the agenda, Mr. Brown?
No, Your Honor, I have none this evening.
Okay, any from up here? First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have several minutes to approve this evening. The first is the joint City Council, EDA Planning Commission, and ZBA meeting of October 29th, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve? Any discussion, any changes in the minutes? Have a motion and a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next list is the next set of meetings, or I'm sorry, the next minutes are the special council meeting of November 13th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Remove.
Support.
Discussion, any corrections, deletions, attractions? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. And then the next item is the regularly scheduled City Council meeting of November 13th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Remove.
Support.
Any discussion on that? Any changes? Nice job, Kathy.
Thank you.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. We have one item of correspondence. It is a notice of hearing before the Michigan Public Service Commission for customers of the DTE Electric Company, case number U-20221. There was another one that didn't come through the official channel, but I think probably everybody got a copy of an email from one of the residents that wanted to send us an email. Does everyone know what I'm talking about? Okay, so anyway, I just want to make note that it's from a resident on Charm's Road and Winding Way that expressed some concerns about an issue that we'll be discussing later on, so. Next item on the agenda is the first call to the public. The rules for speaking to the public are as follows. The public shall address the council during the call to the public, which shall be included on the agenda immediately after correspondence and again immediately after new business. The first call to the public immediately after correspondence shall be limited to agenda items only. A person shall not address the council in excess of five minutes unless the time is extended by a majority vote of the council present. Persons wishing to address the council shall identify themselves in their place of residence and shall state their reason for addressing the council, and all comments by the public shall be made directly to the council. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address the council on any agenda items this evening? Seeing no one, I'll close the first call to the public. Next item on the agenda is the city manager's report. We have one city manager's report. It's for October 2018. Anybody have any questions of the city manager or anybody else? Mr. Gottschall.
Thank you. Regarding actually the wastewater and water report, on page 13, under where it gives a breakdown for the maintenance cap expenditures, it shows the last few months that we've been over our budget for this year, which we're about halfway through. So I was wondering if that is going to get offset with SAW grant money or fees or if we're just kind of eating into our fund balance and will do so until next July, basically?
Yeah, that's correct. This SAW grant won't have any impact for any maintenance-related items.
Okay. So we're, we just, do we have a lot more expenditures you anticipate before we get to the end of the fiscal year?
It's hard to say. I mean, I'm trying, obviously, the answer would be hopefully not. We'll continue to prevent maintenance that we can to prevent that, but...
Okay. And then the other question I had, maybe it's been in the report before, but it kind of jumped out at me, was the Maple North lift station on page 18 toward the bottom there. Everybody else is following along. And it says that we've been working with their property management team to work, or I guess, try to explain that you can't flush flushable wipes, and they're kind of having a burden on the system at this point from that one development. Have they done a mailing to their residents at all to explain that?
We talked with them. We did provide them our kind of toilets, or our toilets on a trash can. I've talked to them on several different occasions, expressed the concern we have with what this is doing to that lift station. That lift station is directly fed by that development. You know, as far as that, I mean, we continue to go out there weekly to maintain the, you know, or try and have a look at it and then continue the communication with the management offices. You know, it's somewhat successful, maybe, at this point. I mean, I'm not seeing, you know, going from 100 percent of grease to zero, but we're getting some traction. I just don't know what the extent of their outreach is. I mean, dealing with the management, other than us, you know, it'd be great if I had to be a personnel, we could go door to door and try and, you know, better educate them on what can be flushed and what can't be, but we just don't have the resources for that.
Okay. Is there any point that we would kind of treat them like some of the restaurants we see where we have fines or things like that? Or is this sense that lift stations just kind of for their development then?
Yeah, so I've been working with Tim on that to try and recover some costs that are associated to this, because we've had to do some extensive cleaning, more than we've ever had to do before. Usually every couple times per year, we do a preventive maintenance, go out there and actually remove the grease. It's been quite more significant, and I've worked with Tim to recover those costs.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Resnick.
My question was also, following on to that, in terms of the communication to the management, have we laid it out in black and white? And here are the costs for the wet station number two, pump repair, twice-weekly visits, inspections. That might not be a bad idea to put in there and show that it's costing, you know, tens of thousands of dollars above and beyond.
Yeah, I've been getting with Tim on getting those costs. It's taken a little bit of time to get the cost of pumps and that kind of stuff, so kind of putting that together and obviously, you know, that for surely might be the best deterrent in preventing future issues at that station.
Right. And then the next question on the tri-bar, has the permanent filtration system been procured and is it on site yet?
To the best of my knowledge, no.
Not yet? Okay, so the temporary carbon filtration is in place, but not the permanent one?
To the best of my knowledge, no.
Any timetable?
December 28th, I believe, is what they...
December 28th is still?
Yeah, that's all I can...
And there's an expected betterment yet in the accounts with the permanent solution in place?
Yes.
But until we do testing in January, you won't know.
Right.
All right. All right, thanks.
Anyone else? Thanks, man.
Thank you, guys.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separation, separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests, in which event the items will be removed from the consent agenda and added to the regular agenda at the end of unfinished or new business. Do I have a motion?
Remove.
Support.
I have a motion and a support. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, consent agenda passes. Thank you. There is no unfinished business, which takes us to new business. First item under new business is a recommendation to approve a request from Leo Sauve to approve final site condominium VCA site plan for development of 38 single-family residential lots to be called Milana Estates. Do I have a motion?
Remove.
Support.
Hello, Carmen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You saw this project during the preliminary phase about two years ago, and this is a four-step process, which, by the way, next year, we're going to come forward with ordinance amendments, looking to shorten the process a bit, because there is some duplication here. But when you saw it the last time, they had provided a layout, a general layout of how this development would occur. There have been some changes based on the significant amount of wetlands that they found on the site and the budding site, the Cambridge site. And what we've looked to do throughout this process with these two developments is to integrate them not only between each other, but also with the Anthem project across the street. So all of the houses that will be built here will, at a minimum, have the same design standards as the houses in the Anthem project. They're going to be the same, obviously, the same streets, sidewalks, light standards. It's, there's going to be the same mixture requirements of housing types, so we don't have, you know, exactly the same houses, you know, color-wise and building type side by side or across the street. So there's been, there's going to be a lot of similarity between this project, the Cambridge project, and the Anthem project. This one comes out onto, has its own entrance on the Maple Road. And one of the other features I want to point out here, because Deb Barker's here, too, we've worked on this long and hard. We've worked with both developers to get a road underneath the ITC easement to eventually be able to connect over to Gunner Metallo Park. And the thought was, why have, because there is a requirement for each development that you have like 1,000 square feet of space for each unit that's dedicated to recreation. But with all the wetlands and the small size of these particular developments, to us, it didn't really make sense to have a little tiny pocket park in there that really wouldn't have any significance for the people to live there. Instead, we wanted to make sure that we obtained a connection that would take them over to Gunner Metallo Park eventually, so they could use those facilities. It just would make a lot more sense to do it that way. So the applicants, both for this project, Leo Sauve, and the Cambridge project, have worked hand in hand with us and with Deb to come up with an agreement to help participate in the financing of that connection underneath, the road connection underneath the ITC lines in exchange for having to put these small pocket parks in each development. So it ends up being a win-win. They're also, where the two projects meet each other, they're also going to have a pathway that goes from the sidewalk to the trail that goes behind the properties on the south side of the projects. So it's going to be really very user-friendly for the people that live there. Not only can they walk over to the downtown into the parks, the park on the way, but they'll have access to Gunner Metallo Park, too. So it opens up whole new recreation opportunities for them in the future, and also an opportunity for the city to have more people using that park down the road, too. So those are some of the key features here. We've worked out, the city attorneys drafted up a development agreement. We've got some fine tuning to do with that, just to make sure that the wording is the way that we want it, but overall, it's, that's pretty close to where we want it. And also the condominium documents, excuse me. I've got a drink here. And also, they've submitted draft condominium documents that will closely mirror the Anthem project also. So that's in a nutshell, it's been a very challenging site for them, I know, especially given the number of units that they're going to be getting out of this project. They've had to work with DEQ, they've had, you know, a gas line that runs right through the project. It's been a real challenge for them, so I give them a lot of credit for sticking with it and getting to this point where they're ready to move forward on it. Hopefully, we'll see the Milana, or we'll see the Cambridge project. They went together to the planning commission meeting on the same agenda, but now they're separated, but we're hoping to see the other project come forward very shortly. And once again, you'll see the exact same standards with that one that we have for this project. So, but a lot of hard work and effort on the applicant's part and also on the city's part in terms of the staffing consultants and so forth. So if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we, do we have, or does anybody have the easement from ITC yet?
We do have the contract, and so once these have been approved, both Cambridge and Milana, then we'll proceed with the easement.
When you say you have a contract, do you have, does that mean you have an easement set right now?
We have a dedicated, the easement in place as far as the design, but we have not finalized that with ITC.
Okay. What would happen if ITC doesn't give us an easement?
Well, we have, well, I don't know. I mean, but I, we have something in place that says they will move forward this, there's no timeline on it.
Okay. Sort of an agreement in principle that we'll do that and sign and dot the i's. I got that, but it's just not done yet. Correct. And the dollars, do they have dollars committed for that roadway? How many dollars do they have since they're not doing the pocket parks and so the roadway is already committed?
Yeah, what the agreement is, is that Cambridge will make a financial contribution towards the easement, and for this project, the developer is going to actually build half of the road to go underneath the power lines. So that would take care of one and a half out of four parts. So the remaining connection, which would be?
That has changed.
Oh, okay, well, I'll let you handle it.
Originally, what Carmen was saying was correct, because we had the two on the west side of the property, the Cambridge, the Milana, and then we were considering the Cavalero property on the far side. So we were going to split the cost of the easement plus the construction of the road We have not reached an agreement with the Cavaleros at this point, and so we felt the city manager, with discussion, we felt that it was not appropriate to even consider that at this point, including the Cavaleros into this agreement. So both Milana and Cambridge will still commit to the 20,000, which will allow us to get the easement in place, and then we will have 20,000 for future road connection to, in Gunner Metallo.
Do you think this road between those two developments to Gunner Metallo is only going to be $20,000?
The easement is. The road construction...
Talking about building the road.
Their road construction was considered with about 40, I think you said, Tim.
And what if the Cavaleros don't allow an easement to go across their property to Gunner Metallo?
That's why we are not building the road to nowhere halfway through. That's why we pulled that. So we'll get the easement, so at some point, hopefully down the road to Cavaleros.
Hopefully, okay.
Yes.
So, but if he doesn't give it, then we have no pocket parks for those two developments and a road that goes, sort of like that bridge that the guy wanted to build in Canada, goes halfway across the river and just sits there then?
Well, we're not building it halfway across.
Well, we're looking for an easement. We can't connect to Gunner Metallo if they don't give us an easement.
Correct.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yes. Yeah, well, we will have the easement in place, though, for future.
Mr. Gottschall.
Thank you. I know you said, hopefully soon we'll see the Cambridge Estates. Given that a part of this development is disconnected from another road system, do we have a timeline? Has anyone been talking to them? Or what is the plan if something were to happen with Cambridge with these other sites off to the south here? They can't build those, obviously, because there's no roads there. How does that, is that going to prevent them, numbers-wise, from wanting to develop this out?
Yeah, the, and we've talked about that. I mean, they either have to have access from Cambridge, or they have to have the access from the other side, which includes accessing through the park. So, you know, they're going to, they're at this point really dependent upon the Cambridge project going through. Unless we've talked to them, they are, I mean, they still are working on getting their information together for their final council review on this. They've already got the planning commission approval. They just need final council approval. So we do think it's going to come in relatively soon. I mean, they want to get that project going also.
Okay. That was all I had. Thank you. Mr. Resnick.
Yeah, just, I had in my notes here, a question as well about the easements. In the past, ITC would not grant easements. As a matter of fact, when we did the Pottery Road Safety Path, we had to seek a lease agreement for that land underneath the wires, and we weren't granted an easement. Is that, has that changed?
Yeah, they do, they will grant the easement to put the road under there, and it is just a road. It's not like something that's, you know, where you're going to put a house or something like that, but they're still charging us for it.
Yeah, because I believe we had a lease agreement for the Pottery Road Safety Path.
Yeah.
Second question, the 26-inch, or 26-inch, 26-foot roadway width, will this be like Anthem posted on one side of the street that there's no parking on one side of the street at least, right?
Yeah, this will match exactly what we have in Anthem. Whatever, they're same dimensions, same rules, so whatever we're doing in Anthem, we would also apply to this.
You'd still be able to get our equipment down there in case of fire, whether it was. On the Maple Road entrance, is there, are there XL/DL lanes foreseen? I think Anthem actually has XL/DL areas when they did that road off of Goodrich onto Maple. The draw didn't look like it as far as...
No, we, yeah, because it's on the curve, we didn't have room to do that. We were going to limit the XL/DL to a very small area for that piece.
So it's sort of, there will be something there, but not...
There will be, but not nearly as long as the other ones, just based on the curve that's there.
All right. That was it? Thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Gottschall.
That kind of reminded me, when we were talking about lanes on a Maple, I know, going back when this first came in front of us, we were talking about having a boulevard entrance onto Maple, or that way fire trucks and emergency equipment could get in there if it was a standalone subdivision, if something were to happen where they didn't get another access over to Cambridge or the park somehow. Is it just going to be one single entrance, or is it going to be a boulevard, double entrance, anything like that?
No, it's, it is going to be just the single entrance. They didn't have the land available to put the boulevard in there. And really, once again, for the second access point, we're really, you know, for permanent circulation and fire access, we're really counting on that connection to Cambridge.
Okay. The, well, the second, the Cambridge part would only cover those few lots off to the south and still wouldn't take care of the northern section necessarily, because it looks like there's wetland or something in between those two.
Well, there is, there is a connection on the northern end, too. There's one just beneath the turnaround there. They call this that. Okay, there's another one there. So eventually, this will, you know, if you can't get it from Maple Road, you'll be able to come through Anthem and then up through Cambridge to get into there. I mean, that's the challenge. I mean, it's such a challenging site, and it, there's a lot, it's like a jigsaw puzzle. There's a lot of different pieces that have to interlock. And unfortunately, we can't put all the pieces down at one time. We've done our best to do that, and we've encouraged and worked with the applicants to do that, and we recognize that the easement on the south end and ultimate connection to Gunner Metallo, it's a challenge, but we're, you know, it's one of those things that if you're persistent and you keep at it long enough, eventually, you know, you can make that happen, and that's the approach that we're taking.
Okay. I guess, directed toward our public safety director, is that then fine with our fire department and our fire chief at this time, just having the one single entrance going in to that northern part?
I have to, during the pre-construction meetings, the fire personnel would have certainly had their eyes on these plans. Captain Geisler and Chief Roberts, they certainly would have had input into these plans, and I have no doubt that after having their eyes on them, they would have been comfortable with this, or they never would have agreed to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, they do write letters to the planning commission for each review, and so, and they, their review recommended approval conditioned upon review of the final construction drawings, which is pretty typical for them and for the engineering, so.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the request from Leo Sauve to approve final site condominium VCA site plan for development of 38 single-family residential lots to be called Milana Estates. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration of an addendum number three to the organic recycling site development and ground lease agreement with Spurt Industries LLC of Zeeland, Michigan, for a five-year lease extension for the compost site in operation adjacent to the DPW work facility. Do I have a motion?
Remove.
Support.
Hi, Tim.
Hi. Thank you, Your Honor. So we are recommending the extension of the lease for the Spurt Industries. As you may know, the compost facility has been in use since 2008, and we've had its, we've had its share of issues over, you know, throughout the tenure. We've, I think, recently, in the last three years, since we've gotten a new owner to the company, we've reduced the orders and I think we've addressed the issues from the residents significantly. The things to keep in mind with this is, we utilize this for our facilities to dispose of the leaves that we pick up throughout the city. The money of the residents use this also for disposing of any of their landscape materials, you know, throughout the year, and it is a benefit to the city. It's local. One of the things on compost facilities that you may know is, it's a difficult thing to keep in the system if it's not controlled properly. There's usually stormwater problems that, you know, can be discharged to other areas, and this site is unique because it used to be the wastewater treatment plant. It's kind of in a bowl, and it's set up so that the clay lining that the old treatment plant had is utilized there to seal from any organics leaching into the soils and also moving off-site because it's kind of in a bowl. So it is, it is a very good site for it, and I've asked Bill Whitley to just address some of the other items that he's taken, he's taken control over the last three years. So introduce Bill Whitley.
Good evening. My name is Bill Whitley. I'm the owner of Spurt Industries. As Tim mentioned, I purchased this company in 2016, and since that time, have worked to make improvements at the site here in Wickson. I'm involved here and involved also in composting across the entire state. So in addition to my work at Spurt, I serve as president of the Compost Council of Michigan on the executive committee of the Michigan Organics Council and on the board of directors of the Michigan Recycling Coalition. I'm a member of the U.S. Compost Council and have completed the training course to achieve industry certification as a certified compost operations manager. As we wind down our third season in my time here at Spurt, we've worked hard to make improvements in the operations, which, as Tim kind of alluded to, was really in distress when I got here. We've improved the processing speed... We've improved the processing speed, we've reduced the amount of material that is on-site, we've widened and created roads. Over the past three years, we tripled the number of operators that are employed at the site, and we've added equipment to enhance our ability to process yard waste into compost. We've done our best to be good citizens of the, the community of Wixom, and I want to be clear that we are citizens of the community of Wixom. My, my son is a first grader around the corner at Wixom Elementary. We accept all the material collected by the city DPW at no charge, as, as per the terms of our contract. And, and so far this year, nearly 500 times, city residents have loaded yard waste into their own vehicle and drove material to our site, which we, which we accept at no charge as well. And as I, I reviewed my customer list in advance in the meeting tonight, we have 22 other Wixom businesses that are customers of Spurt Industries, and depend on us for their survival. And, you know, these landscapers are servicing Wixom residents and other Wixom businesses. We did receive some odor complaints last winter, and that's something that we take very seriously, and that we've, we've studied and that we've worked on. There's, there's an ideal range of parameters that you want in order to successfully compost, and there's four key ones. There's carbon and nitrogen ratio, moisture level, bulk density, and free airspace. And without getting too far into the weeds on that, when we looked at the piles that were causing us problems before, we were heavy in nitrogen, we were too high in bulk density, and we were too low in free airspace. And so, we made adjustments in our process to compensate for those problems. Now, when we receive grass, which is heavy in nitrogen, we put, when we receive fresh grass, we put it in between two rows of leaves. Leaves are heavy in carbon. By placing the grass in the middle, this gives, gives us the ability to mix the grass and leaves together and achieve the proper carbon to nitrogen ratio. We've also changed the way that we handle our screened overs. Screened overs are at the end of the process. When we sell a compost or a topsoil, you want a very fine product. The larger things left is a stick, for example. Those are screened overs, and we used to separate those as well. So, in the past, we would have had grass, leaves, and screened overs separately. We now reintroduce those screened overs into the pile, and, and those larger, you know, larger sticks and larger items help to improve our bulk density and improve our free airspace with the added benefit of inoculating the pile with the beneficial microbes that, that make compost. And I'm happy to report that this batch of changes, in conjunction with the, the weather station that we've installed and monitoring those conditions and increasing our pile turning frequency, has been successful. And so, between Tim and myself, we have not received odor complaints since last winter. We continue to monitor our piles, and we continue to optimize our operations to be good citizens to the community. And so, I hope that gives you kind of a quick window into what's been happening at Spurt and the progress that we're making, and to give you that and to ask that we move forward with executing the, the extension.
Any questions? Mr. Beagle.
Thanks. I appreciate that you're taking the effort to work on that odor situation. I know that was a big issue with our residents last year, and we need to take care of that. And another one, it was in the email that we received from the, the citizen, he's talking about the, the jake breaking and stuff from the equipment. Maybe what you could do is send a letter to all your customers, because under Article Sue Two on our site operation, there's, there's stipulation, and they're prohibiting the use of jake breaking by the vendor's truck. So, maybe you could send a letter out to your customers explaining to them, the speed limit is 30 miles an hour on Charms Road, and the reason for that is there's residential, there's neighborhoods, and there's a school there, and maybe if they drove the speed limit, then they wouldn't have the jake break. I mean, I understand that for these companies coming in and out, that time is money, and they want to get in and get out, but that's not a good excuse to, to, to speed and drive down Charms Road like that and through the city streets like that. So, I appreciate if you could do something like that.
Certainly, we can, we can do that. And also, over the summer, when that concern was raised, we posted a flyer in the office to remind all of the drivers that come in that jake breaking is not permitted for people coming to and from the site. And, you know, we, we have the ability to, to kind of enforce that and to choose different trucking companies if, if people don't follow.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Resnick?
First of all, thank you very much. It answered a lot of my questions, and I had, as Tim knows, I had pages' worth of questions that, and I appreciate, Tim, the, the homework that you did regarding the alternate sites, and now I understand the difference of how the clay lining is a huge benefit and makes it an ideal site compared to some of the other communities that have tried this. And I really appreciate, you know, the, because I, I did a lot of research a couple of years ago when the odors first started happening, and again, it smells like fermentation is going on, and it's, it was prevalent throughout the four subdivisions in that area, and maybe even down in years when the wind shifted. There was, the, the windrow turning is something that is absolutely necessary if you look at any academic research even from the 1980s. How can we guarantee that that practice will continue through the length of this contract if we extend, extend the contract?
So, we're really in the business now of manufacturing a high-quality compost, and I will say that my business model there varies a little bit from the prior operator, who was really looking to bring material in. And I look at myself more as a manufacturing business, and we want to produce a high-quality product. And in order for us to do that, we need to turn, and we need to turn regularly. So, the prior owner did not own equipment to, to turn piles, and he rented equipment periodically throughout the year to conduct that. And I purchased equipment to do it, and it stays on-site all the time, and we've, we've staffed for it. So, I have full-time staff and full-time equipment so that we can be turning piles constantly.
One of the other factors in academic research on this is that watering is just as important as the carbon and the nitrogen compound. What, and I think 50% or whatever is the ideal factor.
Fifty to 60% moisture is your ideal.
Do you have active watering at the site?
We are not actively watering now. We've, we've looked at, at watering systems, and we've actually worked on a trial with Chupan Recycling on, on using some of their byproduct as watering piles, which is an added benefit to the city because they, they have an effluent that's, that's been a challenge for, for Suez and the city there, and it's actually a beneficial product potentially for us in composting. So, we're working with them and looking at that, yes.
All right. Because that's, you know, I know that that might have also helped the problem from two and three years ago with the odor as well, right?
Yep.
The other, the other question I had, is I know that we currently have the contract written so that the hours of operation are concurrent with the DPW yard operation hours. I did an informal survey with residents along Charms over the last week, and found that the biggest complaint was odor, but I could not find a single person that said it's been there in the last nine months. So, thank you very much for addressing those. But the next biggest issue is the decibel level, and I know that there's been some studies, and it's at 57 dB, and that's below the federal limit of 67. But, fact of the matter is, those residents that are two and three houses from Charms, their, their dishes do shake, and a lot of it is the much larger trucks that are going through there, and they're driving like bats out of hell. They routinely exceed the speed limit on Charms. And I've gotten behind a couple of them, and they're, they're doing 46 miles an hour, right, in the 30 zone, if there's a school there. So, I think that if there's a way to reinforce that, you know, through the check-in station or whatever else, it would be appreciated. And the next question that all the residents I talked to this week had asked this question, can the hours of operation be further limited so that it's not as much of a nuisance? Suggestions from people were like from 10 to 3 versus the 7 to 5 right now. That would be very favorable for the residents that live in those four subdivisions. So, I just wanted to hear a comment about that.
It, it makes it difficult to, to limit that only in that most of the companies that come in are landscapers, and, and they, they have their job to do as well. And if they can't get into the compost facility until later in the morning, it makes their, it makes their job more difficult, I would say. And we do get, you know, there are waste management trucks that, that go through on, on, on a daily basis and are on schedule as well, that, that would limit their ability to use this site as one of their, yeah, their recycling areas. So, it, it does make it difficult, you know, and the 7 o'clock to, to 5 o'clock is, is a normal business hours for all this kind of industry.
And again, the complaints are, a lot of people are still home at 7:00 AM, preparing breakfast for the kids who, you know, start at the middle school at whatever time. I know it's at 8:00 or whatever, right? 8:00 something. And the nighttime, when parents are coming home and preparing the evening meal, and sometimes that, people do eat early still, right, at 5:00. So, I think if anything that can be done to further limit those hours, I think that would be very, very beneficial to those residents that, that make most of the complaints, so. All right. Let me just see if anything else in mind here. I think, I think that's, that's about it. I think all the rest of the questions have been addressed. Thanks.
Later.
Yeah, and then, and Tim, when we, we were talking beforehand, you were mentioning you had done either some rough math or some numbers related to the trucks per hour.
Sure.
Or how, I mean, I didn't, I don't, I don't want to say it was a traffic study, but you guys give a general idea of, of times and what has been coming and going.
Yep. Well, in 2016, we did do a traffic study, and that's where we got the decibel levels. The 43 different areas or sites along Charms Road, basically a residence, residential areas, their houses. And of the 43, yeah, there wasn't any, any decibel levels greater than 57 that I'm aware of. And what I was doing with the math, we, we generated roughly $70,000 worth of, well, based on, from the landfills, or from, from the landscaping, 75 cents of every cubic yard that goes into that comes to the city. And using that as 75, $70,000, bringing it back to how many cubic feet that, about 90-some thousand cubic feet. And if you use the math of 12 yards per truck, that, that rounds off to roughly four trucks per hour during a 10-hour day of 5 cents. And, you know, that's, that's the average of that. Now, when we, when we, Bill and I talk later, there's actually trucks, the, the trucks from like Waste Management and...
Waste Management, GFL, Republic, those trucks range 25 to 32 yards capacity for the, for the garbage trucks that are coming in there, so that would further reduce.
And then, just piggybacking on Mr. Resnick's comment, though, if you were to reduce the reduction in hours, then you just increase the traffic, is what would end up happening.
Right.
Which would probably have a negative effect as to the residents, or what they'd be looking for.
Correct.
Okay. That's what I was asking related to the math that you were talking, where that would be.
Excellent. Okay.
Anybody else?
Oh, sure.
I followed my last question.
Oh, okay.
The, the tipping fees since the last extension were changed from 50 cents from the original contract to 75 cents. What is typical in the industry? Are we charging too little?
I, I think it's a fair, a fair rate compared to what's, what's being done elsewhere. When that change was made from 50 to 75, it predates my, my involvement in Spurt, but at that time, the site was expanded from roughly seven acres to the roughly 12 that it is now, and I think that it was in recognition of that expansion.
I think it'd be good to take a look at surrounding communities, because there's a lot of communities that have done these mega sites now, mega sites, but larger centralized sites versus smaller composts. So, it might be worthwhile looking into.
I can check, I can check on all rates.
Yeah, I, I, I know that the two complaints that, that we hear most often about are the odors, which, thank you for, for your report and your resolving, your efforts to resolve that problem. I, I can only say that, that I haven't received any complaints over the last, oh, maybe about a year about the odors. And, and, you know, we, we go to all the subdivision meetings, including the ones along Charms Road, so, so I appreciate the, and those haven't come up at those meetings, so I appreciate the, the efforts to, to do that. The other is, is the traffic and the complaints that, that we have on the traffic. And I, maybe we're kind of looking at the wrong people when we, you know, want you guys to, to address that, although I think the letter that would go out to the people about the fancy driving is probably appropriate. But, you know, maybe what we need to do is talk about it in the area of law enforcement and try to, and maybe it's up to us because of the different programs that, that the police department have going on right now relative to speeders and, and these other problems. Maybe we need to take a hard look at, at maybe dedicating, you know, maybe an officer to just do traffic duties in the city. I mean, we, we get a lot of complaints and a lot of issues along those lines, and maybe taking a look at that in the budget meetings for next year might be an appropriate way to address some of these issues that come up. But I'm convinced that you've done a good job in, in turning that place around, and certainly I support this particular motion. Thanks a lot. So, if nobody else has anything, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thanks. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is recommendation to enter into a winter maintenance agreement with Robertson Brothers Anthem Development Phases Two and Three for Goodrich, Fletcher, Madison, Curtis, Theodore, and Center Roads by adopting the authorizing resolution and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the 2018 agreement on behalf of the city. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Lord?
Discussion.
Yes, so this, this, this motion is for the winter maintenance agreement. It was my hope that we were going to be accepting these streets a little sooner, and that, that has not come to fruition. So, once, once again, they've, the development has asked us to, to go ahead and perform the winter maintenance for this. I utilized the, the county's rates for this because that's, that was the only fair thing that I could do. Unfortunately, I didn't get the, the 2% more than, than we wanted to from the county, so I, it was just maxed out at the 2%, just like the county's rates, and that's what you see for you, so. It's, it's still reasonable, and I think it's, you know, we will be performing this in the future anyway, and this is just the practice for when we actually take over the roads.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, I have a motion to accept the winter maintenance agreement for all those streets I mentioned, and authorizing the mayor and the clerk to sign the agreement. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the introduction of an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances for the City of Wixom, Chapter 5.10, Peddlers, Solicitors, and Canvassers, Section 5.10.079, by removing language pertaining to the private posting of signs prohibiting peddling, soliciting, canvassing, or trespassing at each entrance to the subdivisions, condominiums, or other neighborhoods. This discussion was kind of, or this, this was kind of requested by a couple of council members, and we're kind of bantering it around, I think, here at the recent council meeting we talked about it a little bit. And I think Mr. Goslin is kind of one of the ones in particular that would like to, to talk about this, so I've asked him to go ahead and start the discussion on, on this.
Thank you. So, with this particular one, as you can see going through what has been included in our packets, it's been voted on a few times in 2014. I know we've addressed it a few times since even I've been on council this term, so over the years, it's gone through a number of changes and whatnot. And going back to our most recent discussions, which would have been a while ago now at this point, we had put in there including signage and inputs, banning peddling and soliciting and canvassing. And if I'm recalling the conversations correctly that we had, we didn't really think it was ever a good idea to ban... ever a good idea to ban canvassing and being a First Amendment right, a free speech, and items like that. And even soliciting kind of came under the same umbrella because we were thinking about people that might go selling Girl Scout cookies or Boy Scout popcorn door-to-door, items like that, where it's just kind of a neighborly thing to do. It's not the window salesman or anybody like that going through. So having passed this now and seen some neighborhood start to put up these signs, it is something I think we need to go back and address because, to my recollection, it doesn't entirely follow what we were initially discussing with these changes, or at least the spirit of what we were trying to accomplish. I understand that the peddling and not wanting to deal with that, but I don't really think it's right to ban outright canvassing and potentially even soliciting throughout an entire neighborhood, just based on trying to get at the, the window salesman or the what-have-you, basically. So I know the city manager had put in kind of some changes that he had put together here, and I'm not, those being, those get rid of the signs altogether, except for on just individual households. I, that might be a step too far, whereas I think potentially just allowing signs but not allowing them to prohibit canvassing and potentially even soliciting. So that's kind of my thought process here. I wanted to get some other intake and then make a motion based on what we all might be able to agree on and call to vote on it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Leader.
Um, what, I guess, what is our definition of peddling versus solicitation? I've pulled it up right here.
In, in the actual, this ordinance right now, in the general ordinance, pedal and peddling mean traveling by foot or automobile from place to place or from street to street, carrying, conveying, or transporting goods, wares, merchandise, including food produces, offering and exposing the same for sale or making sales and delivering articles to purchasers, or taking or attempting to take orders for the sale of goods, wares, or merchandise, books, or magazines, personal property of any nature whatsoever for future delivery, or for services to be furnished or performed in the future, whether or not this, the individual carries or exposes for sale a sample of the subject of such sale, and da-da-da. So that is...
That's Girl Scouts.
That's peddling. Well, soliciting says solicitor soliciting mean a direct or indirect request by or on behalf of a charitable, religious, or political organization to any person in the city for the payment, delivery, donation, pledge, or commitment of money, credit, financial assistance, membership, property, goods, services, or other things of value, and then that continues on. So we kind of took that, since it's, you buy cookies or whatever, it goes to a charitable organization. For us, that was more solicitation than pedal. Pedal would be a for-profit kind of a, your, your, your window guys, your exterior house painting people, things like that, whereas soliciting, since you're collecting for a charitable organization, that's why we call that. Canvassing was, no, I'm just scrolling. Canvas and canvassing mean to enter upon private property, property without any prior specific invitation or appointment to inform, educate, advocate, petition, secure petition signatures, requests, or enlist support, or opposition, or to convey any other message regarding religion, philosophy, ideology, politics, including parties, candidates, initiatives, and issues, charitable organizations, or other cause or issue by verbal, written, or other forms of communication, including the distribution of handbills, flyers, and other materials. So the way that kind of breaks down to me is canvassing is religion, ideology, politics. Soliciting is charitable organizations mainly, and then peddling is usually your for-profit businesses.
So you're just looking to remove the peddlers?
Well, you can keep banning peddling, but I don't think we should, we need to remove from here to me the ability to ban soliciting and canvassing from neighborhoods, I'd say.
That's not it.
Yep.
I mean, that, you said it the same way as I did. All right, I follow.
Mr. President. I mean, one of, you know, when I think back to my childhood, growing up in Detroit, I was with Troop 584, and one of, one of the rites of passage as a young boy was, is developing social skills of going door-to-door. We, we did soap sales for our troop for raising money, and, and, you know, you do the popcorn sales today, and, and I still think that, all in all, those decisions should be made by individual households and not a subdivision, right? I mean, if we look at our subdivision association meetings now, you get 2%, 5% participation in the meetings where something's voted on, and to have a sign posted at a subdivision entrance banning it for all 208 houses in that subdivision, maybe only, you know, one or two people really wanted to ban it. Well, they can put those signs on their individual doors, and I think that, you know, every individual's right to post it and not answer the door if they hear the doorbell coming, or if it's a religious organization or charitable organization. So I'd be in favor of, of changing the ordinance so that it is an individual house-based decision and not a collective decision for a subdivision association or development, so.
Just out of curiosity's sake, what, how would you, how would you deal with the subdivisions that have already put those signs at some expense that, in their front or subdivision?
We've only had one, correct?
There's more than one. There's a couple.
Catching on.
That's what I wanted to get to before it was everybody, but I know there's a few in the different phases of Loon Lake Woods, there's each entrance or high gate on the green, and those are the ones that I can recall off the top of my head.
I must have ignored it. And just one other comment is that we do have an ordinance that deals with peddlers and the peddler's license, and there is a process for canvassers to approach Public Safety Director with a note saying, "I plan to be canvassing in these neighborhoods at such and such a date," so I think those are adequate solutions, so.
Mr. Kennedy, you?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
So what do our lawyers say about this whole thing? What's, what does the Supreme Court say about it?
Sort of covered in my report to council, the city attorney was comfortable with the way the ordinance was written. In other words, it wasn't a question of legality. Councilman Resnick mentioned the concern about a minority of, of people being able to make a decision, decision for an entire neighborhood effectively with that signage at the entrance to the neighborhoods. She was comfortable with that from the, it's a representative democracy, just like anything else, you know, maybe only 50% of the voters pick the president, and then the rest of us that didn't vote on that would have to live with that decision, much like this particular situation. So she wasn't concerned about it from a legality standpoint, and that's why I tried to convey in my report. It's not a question of legality, it's just a question of whether the ordinance as it stands is, is what council wants to use to restrict or regulate that kind of activity, or if they're interested in modifying that by potentially removing that signage at the entrance way to the subdivisions and neighborhoods, and allowing it to be done on an individual property-by-property basis. That's really what her answer was. I did not get into the details of what to do about signs that were up. That's, that's something that was interesting and something that would probably have to be addressed. The first answer to that question would be, the signage would no longer be supported by the ordinance language, it would be the, in the Code of Ordinances at that point. It would reference a section that wouldn't really give those signs any weight because there's no, you know, if you strike the language addressing the signage at the subdivision, so fundamentally, they'd be rendered noncompliant with, with the ordinance language, or not, not having any effect vis-à-vis the ordinance language. Obviously, that might still have the impact of causing people not to go through the neighborhoods, obviously, and we'd have to address that and decide how to, how to deal with the signs that are already up. That would be an interesting issue.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Leader.
Yeah. And my question was one of enforcement, really towards how it's enforced now regarding the licensing and things like that, where, you know, I've had people come to my door with, you know, no licenses, saying that my shingles are messed up, and I had my roof replaced the last year, whatever. But I'm trying to figure out in twofold. One, if they have a sign up now in the neighborhood and somebody decides to go and canvas, what's the enforcement protocol there, and then what's the enforcement protocol with the existing licensure? And when the unlicensed people are going through, how's that going?
Well, with respect to signage at the entrance to a subdivision, I can tell you that one of the officers recently went to one of these neighborhoods where there was signage at the entrance and told a very large religious organization, if I named it, you would know it right away, "Please do not," I guess that would be canvas here. I shortly thereafter received a letter from that religious organization's corporate council telling me, "You can't do that. That's our First Amendment right. This is a friendly, a friendly recommendation to you to have your officers not tell our people to leave and stop that behavior." And I, I believe, you know, if, if the police were to continue in that regard, it would subject the city and the department to...
And then, and that's why it's related to the enforcement, because you're, you're under the color of law, and that's, that's Section 193. The question that, from a, I guess more along the lines of the non-for-profitering businesses with the licensing, I mean, are they ticketed? Are they, are they just asked to leave?
If somebody's peddling, because my understanding of the ordinance is, you, if you're, it's only if you're peddling, you have to come and, and get the, get the identification. If they're peddling without a license, typically unless the officer remembers a face or remembers a particular organization, they'll typically get a verbal warning, "Hey, beat it." Or tomorrow morning, go to the city and do it properly. If the officer happens to see a person again, or recognizes an organization, it's, it's still ABC Incorporated, and the officer knows that ABC was warned last week, they'll probably get a civil infraction ticket, which is a non-criminal citation. It's not something that the officer could take the person to jail for, it's the equivalent of a speeding citation. So typically, it's a verbal warning unless they're a frequent flyer.
Yeah, and then, so, and if, and if the signage were to remain in effect, it would just act as a deterrent?
Well, I've instructed my officers not, not to do that, because I don't want to subject the, the city to civil litigation.
Well, I'm just saying if... If a organization or a individual was peddling, canvassing, soliciting?
Well, peddling, peddling's different. But, but if somebody's soliciting or canvassing in violation of a sign, I've told them, you know, and, and sometimes it makes the homeowners' association presidents and the residents unhappy with me and with the police department, but I also don't want to subject the city to a First Amendment violation either. So I've instructed the officers, I don't particularly, not that I don't care, but if there's a sign at the entrance, I don't, you're not to go in there and tell them to cease and desist.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So I guess, being, what I'm saying is if, if there's no way to enforce it, and they want to put the sign up, the sign's just a deterrent that the neighborhood wishes to put up, it's a question of if it's an issue of, "We don't like the signs in front of the neighborhood because they look bad," or if it's just that we're concerned about people coming through. If there's not any enforcement method, then why change?
Mr. Smiley, you?
My, my feelings are similar to that of Councilman Resnick's, you know, dealing with, you know, letting people on an individual basis put a sign, no soliciting, that sort of thing. And this came up, from what I understand, or re-came up, because we were concerned about a First Amendment, you know, violation or concern, and Public Safety Director Moore's, you know, example is insightful, you know, just the kind of thing we were, I think we were worried about. So I, I like the idea of, of changing this to an individual basis, and as far as the signs go, if they're not hurting anything and they can be a deterrent that's unenforceable anyway, I guess there's maybe no harm to just leaving them up, but I guess, like you said, it'd be interesting to discuss that, to figure that out later. And then, that kind of covers the solicitation and canvassing, the peddlers, I don't know how do you, if, we have a process through the city, I believe, to get, to get permission or get the, you know, to go through and sell your wares. I don't know how you, you know, differentiate between the Girl Scouts cookie and the siding guy selling stuff. I don't, you know, I personally don't have any problem with people doing that. If I, if I didn't like it, I, you know, put a little sign, no solicitation, that kind of thing. And, you know, then I just, you know, hide like, hide behind the couch like the rest of us. That's my feelings on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goshen.
Thank you. So per what I have been able to review and remember, peddling in terms of what is required with the city, peddling requires a license. You go into the city, you get a license, and you have to wear it while you're out. If I'm also correct, solicitors and canvassers can voluntarily give notice to the city that they'll be in the area, but it's not a requirement that they get, check in with the city, get licensed by the city, it's purely voluntary basis. And then going back to council member leaders' comments about enforcement versus non-enforcement, I think it's important to remove that section of the ordinance, because right now, even if we're not enforcing it, I think we're still kind of on the hook, because right now, those signs mean something, they point to our rules and our ordinances, and it, I didn't even know about the religious notice that came through or anything. This was kind of something that had irked me on my own. I mean, and that was my main concern, is somebody with big pockets is going to be willing to take a sport over it, and to me, if we leave this on the books, those signs mean something, and so the homeowner associations don't have big pockets, they're going to also go after the city, and that's kind of where I see this leading to, without even having known that that was something that came up. So I guess at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we...
Can I? Oh, can I? Sure. Thanks. Yeah, you know, I, I, I find a disconnect, frankly, with what the attorney advises, that they're comfortable with it, and yet we have a situation like Director Moore comments on about somebody saying, "Hey, it's unconstitutional for you to prohibit us from, because we have our religious rights to, and our right to free speech." So I have a little bit of a, a problem with that, and I think that, frankly, we don't have, we haven't had serious issues, and I don't, I don't know, I, I think part of it, too, has to do with the, and I've, I've talked about this before, when, when we're out canvassing, I guess it's canvassing, for running for office. I mean, how else is somebody who has never run for office before, how are they going to make themselves known to people other than to go door-to-door? And where, where does that fall in there? And I know what I mentioned last time, because there's always a couple of neighborhoods that I always go to that I have problems in because the people, they're, they're younger than me, but they're still senior citizens, and they, they object to people coming up there, to their house, some of them do. Some of them love to see you come in, and they love to have conversation with you, but, but they, they do call the police, and, and, you know, I, I just, we do have an issue there, and I don't know how to deal with it. I don't, I don't know that you're ever going to get the perfect ordinance, but I do find a disconnect with what the attorney's telling us and with what, and this isn't a new issue, this has come up over the past 20 years that I've been around up here, it's come up, oh gosh, I'll bet you five or six times we've, we've hashed this out and talked about it, and we're, we still, and part of it's because it's changing law, and there's, there's a lot of different things that occur, and, you know, case law is, develops. I guess I'm not quite satisfied with, with the attorney's take on it. I don't, but I don't know why we need to change it because we haven't had any, any specific problems. And I, going back to my, my point about the canvassing, what I've done in the past is I've gone in voluntarily to the police department and gotten the, the tag and license to, to walk the neighborhoods, and that seems to have at least satisfied some of the people that, that had objections, but it doesn't very, very often happen, so. I really don't know what to do with that. I'm open to changing it if, if it would solve the problem. the problem. But I think you'd have to have a pretty good proposed language, pretty specific language that, before we pass an ordinance. I think you gotta, but I'll turn it over to you to see what, what it looks like.
Thank you. Well, I was just going to make a motion now to accept or to, I guess, begin the process. Will this have to come up at the next meeting as well, as we typically do with ordinance changes?
Right, I was going to mention that the next meeting would be the next time that we bring this up for basically implementation, if you will, of the, of whatever recommendation. So what I'm hearing from different members of council is a couple of different concerns. I can circle back with the attorney and talk about those different concerns. I think, listening to Councilman Gossel, he was concerned about the possibility of excluding only peddlers as opposed to solicitation and canvassing. That's something I could bring up and get to a finer point with the city attorney on. The concern that was brought up about the First Amendment citations by certain groups, I'd like to have a conversation with the attorney, because I share the mayor's comment on that, that, and I might not be coming at it from the same angle as the mayor, but my concern is the city attorney didn't suggest that we pass an ordinance or didn't write an ordinance that she felt was unenforceable. So I think I need to get that reconciled with, with what the police department's articulated is happening on the streets, so to speak, and what the attorney's take is on the enforceability of the ordinance as written. So I'd like to get some more information from her on that front, get some more information from her on the front of possibly making a change that pertains only to peddling as opposed to soliciting and canvassing. And we can leave it go for tonight. You could, you could approve it tonight. It doesn't have any action until it gets voted upon a second time, and we can re-tackle this with a little bit more information on the meeting of December 11th, if that fits with council's preferences.
Well, it would make sense to flesh it out a little bit more, but I haven't heard the, the motion.
We can change in between, I think, as has been the case. If we, if I make a motion now, and it's just the introduction essentially, you're allowed to make a few changes before we vote on a final kind of ordinance next week. Okay, so in that case, I'd like to motion that we adopt. The motion ordinance has, has been included in our packet here by the city manager. The redlined copy, for those of you looking at your packets.
If I could suggest one language change, I would just say, consistent with other reports here, just say, recommend that city council approve the introduction of an ordinance.
I'll adopt that.
Yeah. That'd be the cleanest way to do it, I say.
Support?
Okay, any more discussion? Any discussion on it? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is second call to the public. I went over the rules speaking to public, for public coming to address the council this evening already, so I will open up the second call to the public, and that's your opportunity to come up and talk to us about anything that you would like to talk about. So please come on up and introduce yourself, and let us know what you have on your mind.
My name is Nix Magnolo. I reside at 3066 Bennington Drive in the Hillsboro neighborhood. Apologies for missing the earlier call to public. I had a child who had a tantrum as I was trying to leave the house, so apologize, I was not able to address you before the discussion. I'm here to speak about the canvassing ordinance. I was someone who was out canvassing in this most recent election cycle, and ran into a number of issues trying to canvas in neighborhoods who had these signs posted. Politics is not something that I've necessarily been heavily involved in in the past, and this year was different, so I was not aware of the, this ordinance being existence, and not necessarily sure how to handle it when citizens of those neighborhoods were to come and say that they were going to call the police on us if we did not leave immediately. It seemed to me to be a First Amendment protected right. I did reach out to the ACLU after these incidences that I took place, and they've been in contact with me. I have in my possession a certified letter that they sent to former Mayor Hinckley, former manager Goodling, and Carol Wasadi, I'm not sure if she's currently the city attorney or not, back in May 11, 2017, about some of the constitutional issues that they had with previous wording of this ordinance. They take up a combo of options. There was previously, according by the information in this letter, and I'm not an expert on this ordinance, but it appeared that they made a number of recommendations that were taken up by the city in terms of canvassing being a required thing for people to come in, register with the city rather than voluntary, as it currently is. There were concerns about the, the time limitations, about when people could canvass in the city. I believe the language relating to canvassing specifically in terms of time limitations had been removed based on the recommendations. And, but the last part of their letter was about the specific language, about canvassing being included in neighborhood-wide banning, and the unconstitutionality of that. And they, you know, I believe that with the council's previous acquiescence to, there are other concerns about the other topics, that nothing further came from that. But I do know that they, in addition to some of the case language included here from the Watchtower organization, from the Jehovah's Witnesses, who I believe I've seen, you know, personally in my neighborhood over the past couple of weeks, that that banning of religious and political canvassing on a neighborhood-wide basis is an area of concern of theirs, and that they've had similar legislation with towns in the surrounding area about that as well. So even though something has not happened yet, and I'm not suggesting that this is something that I'm interested in, but I do think that it is a possibility that if that language is not removed for canvassing and a neighborhood-wide banning, that that could open up the city to some potential legal issues in that regard, and I'd hate to see that happen as well. So I thank you for the discussion tonight, and I will look forward to further discussion on the December 11th meeting, but I definitely am in favor of removing that canvassing language from that particular line of the ordinance with the signage. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just a response... That's okay, it's okay, I don't have any questions. But the point you make, I think, is, is interesting, because again, it, it makes it tough for you to, for somebody new to go out and make themselves known if you can't go door to door, and I'm just thinking of public, local, local public office, but yeah, it's, I think it's a big problem. So I don't know how you solve it. And the other point I was going to make is, I don't know that there would be anything illegal about a subdivision putting a sign up, but the problem, the city might end up in trouble is if they, if they have the ordinance and they enforce the ordinance. And that's, that's my only point. I didn't really need any...
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify. Yeah, the signage itself is not an issue. The banning of peddling and soliciting specifically not an issue, only the inclusion of canvassing on that sign, I think, is the problem there.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Yes, please, come up.
Hello, my name is Jane Cleban. I live at 507 Nature's Cove Court. I've been a resident since 2003. Just a couple things that I'd like to thank people, Kathy and Crystal, who did the election. They did a fantastic job on training all of us pollsters at the recent elections. I wanted to thank them for that. Thanks to Tim Sikma for getting the parking lot done in time for our book sale at the library. Thanks to having that done between our silent auction and our book sale, we were able to donate almost $5,000 to the library, so thank you for getting it done. Also like to thank Andrea Dixon, who's the library director. She's an all-around gem, really a good citizen for the city. And thanks to Ron for his Facebook page. I thank a lot of people. I know my neighbors really enjoy reading your tips on Facebook. And also thanks to the city and the senior center for doing their week, excuse me, their weekly news announcements. It's very, very helpful to the city. And I think all the city employees do a great job, so I just wanted to give a public thank you to the people. Also want to make a few budget observations as you're going into budgeting for the next year and a half. I know it doesn't happen until, what, the end of May or so, but I just want to ask that you make sure you spend our money wisely. I think we're very fortunate that the people of Wixon generally support any millages or tax increases, and I think that's a, a nice trick to have. I just say that we'd like you to do the budget wisely. Don't spend every penny just because it's there. You know, we might need to save it for roads or sewers or things down the line, so just because we have it, I ask you not to spend it frivolously. One thing, is it necessary that we have so many police cars? Particularly when the parking lot was being done, you drive by, you park that there, there's four or five police cars parked there, as well as undercover vehicles. So I just say, do we really need that many? Maybe it would be a good idea to put one of them on, because we're all undercover trucks that are going by, make a slow traffic count. I think it's nice that we had extra vehicles, so we could fill up toys up for hospitality house. It's great, we have our new 30-foot Christmas tree. I'm looking forward to seeing that lit up this week. But did we have to buy a $150,000 cherry picker just to be able to put a Christmas tree up? Why couldn't we borrow it from another community I know they were offered? And was it wise to spend $400,000 on renovating the ballroom? It's going to take five to seven years before we even recoup those expenses. So at any rate, I just say, make sure that when we do put items together, that there's something that really benefits the city. One final request is, can we accelerate putting the signage on the senior center? I know that there's some discussion, do we need a sign there? I think the seniors would like to have a sign up. Someone suggested putting something like the 50-plus club, which would be kind of nice, so I'd just like to put that on, too, if all the seniors would like to have that done. That's all I wanted to say.
I'd have to wait so long to be able to join it, though.
Join us. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Jane.
You're welcome.
I just, and I, I would like to just indicate, from my perspective anyway, I believe that we do spend a lot of time at our budget meetings, and we do have a lot of discussion, and we try our best, each one of us, to responsibly spend the city's money. We're aware of where it comes from. Most of us are hard pay, hard tax-paying, we pay a lot of taxes ourselves, and we know that it's our responsibility to watch our expenditures, and we take our responsibility seriously. Thanks. Anybody else?
Good evening. Mike Smith, 1692 Northland Street. Sure, none of you guys have ever seen an email from me about the spurt? I have to say, this year, with the changes they made, I've only smelt it maybe once or twice, and it's been, you smell it in the evening, and then you didn't smell it in the morning, which is a huge change from what it was. I also do recognize it's a good revenue source for the city, and it does provide benefits for the residents. I just challenge the council to stay on top of them, and make sure that they continue what they're doing and operate in the way they are now. And then also look into any way we could put money aside to fix the DPW driveway that these trucks are going up and down. I don't think that driveway was ever designed for the traffic it gets now, and I think that's something that we should be prudent about, and taking some of that money, or maybe charging us, you know, surcharges to those trucks for using that road, so we don't get stuck as the taxpayers redoing a road that a private business utilized the most. So that's all I got. Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Thank you. Anybody else have any comments they want to? Yes, sir, step right up. Oh, okay.
So each of us Boy Scouts have a question to ask all of you?
Well, do you remember what we've said before? Before, you have to say your name and your address.
Yeah. I'm Noah Springer. I used to be a resident of Wixon, Michigan. I recently moved to Commerce, Michigan. Now I'm living at 2,300 Trillium Hills Drive in Commerce. So all of us Boy Scouts have questions to ask all of you city council members. Real quick, thank you for doing what you do. And so here's my question. Why did you join, why did you think about joining city council?
We're going down the line there?
Yeah.
Are we all have to answer every one of these questions?
Why don't you just take one, because we've got one, two, probably six.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Okay. Okay, you go ahead and do this one.
Short, short, sweet answer, I just wanted to serve my community.
Okay, good answer.
I'll be the judge then. Okay, very good. Who's up next here?
So they turned the tables on you there, Mayor, on what just happened.
Yeah, you can see the high school students, we asked that question.
Aiden Zemblock, 3270 Terracor, Wixon, Michigan. Is the city council part of the judicial branch or the executive branch?
I'll... Go ahead.
It, it is not part of the judicial branch. Judicial branch is located in the court system, the Supreme Court, Circuit Court, federal court, state court. That's where the judges enforce the laws that are done. The city council would be more on the executive branch of government side, although you would call it a municipal government, that we are, we are running a city. The executive branch, as you may have heard, would be more on the presidential side as the CEO of the nation. And then there's the legislative branch, which would be Congress, the House of Representatives. And that filters down all the way from the federal level and then the state level. Michigan has an executive, legislative, and judicial branch, and as it comes down here. So we would be as the executive branch of the city.
Thank you.
Legislative, I'm sorry. Legislative. You confused me.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Michael Gerlingas. I live at 3172 Pembroke County Court. My question was, when elected, how long do you serve as a member of city council?
I got that.
Four?
Four years, and the mayor unfortunately asks her on every two years.
Oh, okay.
But it gives me an opportunity to go out and see everybody twice as much.
She can canvass.
Canvas, as long as the police don't...
I didn't know.
As long as the police don't come. All right. Who's next? Who's up next here, young man?
Do you have a question?
I don't know much. Michael already...
Somebody come up and answer.
And I was...
Yeah, go ahead, that's a good question. Ask him. Ask him, ask him. And I'll go with you.
All right, come on up. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Sadi Bakamora, and I live in, I used to live in Wixon, and now I live in Shurewater, 29, 291101, Shurewater Circle. I have a question. Do you guys make any money?
Well, I'll take, I'll take that one. Mr. Beagle, the answer's no, but go ahead.
Yeah. We do get a stipend for being a city council member, and the mayor gets a little bit extra money, but for, but for the amount of time and work that we do for the city, it's not very much. We, okay, we get $1,500 a year to be at council, and the mayor gets eighteen? $1,800.
I also have one more question. I want to know what the positions are for this, like mayor, deputy mayors, like that.
You want to know which ones we are? I'm the, I'm the mayor, and my, our deputy mayor is Mr. Beagle, and the rest of the members are council members. They might tell you different, but that's what they are.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anybody else? Okay. A couple more back there.
That's okay. Maybe next year, you guys can come up and ask a question. We'd love to have you come on to these meetings. We'd love to have you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We're proud of you for serving and appreciate you coming. Anybody else want to address the council this evening on anything they might have on their mind? Sure. Do you have a question for each of us?
No, really, it's just more of a summary. So I'm Josh Springer. I also used to live in Wixom, but now I live at 2300 Trillium Hills in Commerce. First and foremost, I want to say thank you guys, the council, for having us here and for letting us speak and for giving us the opportunity to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Specifically, I want to thank Councilman Smiley for coordinating all this stuff on the inside of the walls. I kind of coordinated on the outside along with our den leader, John Garlandhouse. And then just a couple of real quick comments. I also like the idea of setting up the speed trap for the speeders on Charms. And then the other thing, too, possibly do like a service level agreement with the smell. I know that I used to be an intern for Dow Corning, and there's tooling that you can use to determine how many particles are in the air, and I don't know how much they cost, but they'll literally tell you like there's, you know, one per 16 trillion particles or whatever. So that's how you could always keep them on his horse. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, anybody else? Seeing no one, I will close the second call to the public. Next item on the agenda are the city manager's comments. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll let the city manager's update that I provided stand on its own here, other than I did want to make mention specifically of one item related to the PFAS situation that we've experienced, and Councilman Resnick was talking earlier with Matt Delaney, who is the SUEZ representative at our wastewater treatment plant. The temporary filtration system has had a good impact on the situation at TriBar, reducing the amount of their exceedance of the standard by 90%. That's the good news. The bad news is, it's still substantially above the limits that are currently the water quality standards that are set by the state. So we're looking to see that improve hopefully more. There is a possibility that that number will continue to go down as the system continues to have a beneficial impact on the discharge coming from TriBar, but the initial results were very promising with the sampling that was done. As I said, it was reduced from 4,800 parts per trillion to 560 parts per trillion, which is a substantial reduction and improvement. We still need to see substantially more improvement, and we're hoping to see that as we continue to monitor the samples coming from that facility and our own wastewater treatment plant. So I did want to start off mentioning that. A couple of other things that I wanted to add to the discussion here is our Tree Lighting Festival, and I hope that you guys will reiterate this as well, is coming up this Friday, November 30th, from, I believe it's 5:30 to 11:00 p.m. Set here at 5:00 p.m., but it's 5:30, is it not? It's 5:30 to 11:00 p.m., so I apologize for that inaccuracy on that update there, but it's from 5:30 to 11:00 p.m. We think that the tree lighting is going to be right around 6:35, my intelligence sources tell me. So we're looking forward to that. Very exciting to see the tree go up over the last week's time. We did get some cool shots of that happening and had a time lapse done on that that we're going to be providing shortly as well, so we're excited to share the excitement that we have for our new tree lighting that's going to happen this Friday from 5:30 to 11:00. There's carriage rides, there's carolers, there's a beer tent that's new to our celebration, San Ariz. It's going to be a good time for every year, so we encourage all residents of Wixom and beyond to come on out and participate with us on Friday. The other things that I wanted to make mention of, we have an opening in the city manager's office. Our administrative secretary, Wendy Brink, who served us for three years very ably and very well, has gone into a new opportunity, and we have posted that administrative secretary opportunity on indeed.com, as well as the Michigan Municipal League's classified site as well. If you're interested in making yourself a candidate for that, we'd love to hear from you. And if you know anybody that you think would make a good candidate for that position, we encourage you to make referrals for that opportunity to those folks and encourage them to apply. The other thing that I wanted to make mention of is just wishing a happy Hanukkah that begins on December 2nd and runs through December 10th, and look forward to all the things that are going to be happening in the upcoming holiday season here. So that's all I had. If there's any questions that Mayor and council has for anything from the update or anything else on their mind, I'd be happy to do my best to answer any questions.
Could you make a comment on the savings that you've got on item number three at the bottom of the page? Might be worthwhile to mention.
Oh, the, oh, the Michigan Municipal League, the work, the experience rate, yeah, I should have mentioned that. That was something that was a very nice experience. We have a loss control consultant that comes to us from the Michigan Municipal League, Jerry Grasik, and he came to us for the usual rehash of our experience, and this loss control mod figure that he refers to is basically a measurement of how many employee injuries we have and the costs associated with those employee injuries that are incurred because of that. We're obviously interested in eliminating workplace injuries to zero, if at all possible, but this mod factor basically measures how good a job the city has done on that. In the past, we've had some challenges in those areas over the years, and the most recent mod was 1.69. And this past period of time, we were successful in reducing that mod factor to 0.82, and 1.0 is basically what would be considered average for an organization of our size. We were substantially worse than average in the past, and this year we were better than average at 0.82. And the cost savings that you're referencing is just related to lost time from work and the things that result in the cost for the city. And it was over $200,000 a year before, and it was reduced to around $100,000 this year, savings of about $110,000 overall. So I appreciate you reminding me of that, Mayor, so it's something to be proud of. Congratulations to the employees for being careful and taking care of themselves and their work that they do for the city and for the residents and for the businesses. And that's also something that is, to the, is good for the supervision that's over those different operations as well. So congratulations to the frontline employees and to the supervision involved, because those are the people that accomplished the improvement this year, and we appreciate that, and the taxpayer should also appreciate that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is our, the city council's comments. Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, please remember the Tree Lighting Festival is this Friday, along with the Historical Society Waffle Open House, which is Sunday. Breakfast with Santa will be coming up before we get together again. I believe most of you guys are passing the candles. That'll be fun. And happy Hanukkah to our Jewish community. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Gatchel.
Thank you. I wanted to thank the scouts for coming out to grill some of our council members with tough questions and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, and that's all I've got for tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Smiley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, thanks to the scouts for coming out. That was great. You guys did fantastic. I do also want to encourage people to go to the Tree Lighting Festival this Friday. My wife and I are excited to attend. I will make sure we're there before 6:35. Oh, really sorry to have missed Mrs. Brink's sort of farewell lunch. She's a delightful lady to have there in the office, and we'll miss her. Finally, happy Hanukkah. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Resnick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things here. One, Mr. Smith's comments, we're right on with, you know, talking about the roads, and my question about the tipping fee increases was related exactly to that. If we look at surrounding communities and see what they're charging for the tipping fees and put it to good use, you know, for the wear and tear on Charms Road and the DPW entrance, I mean, it's got to be, you know, with that volume of traffic for those trucks Monday through Friday per hour, what was it, 200 or whatever, 200 days of operation, that's quite a bit of wear and tear that we would not otherwise have on that road. Also, I think it would be worthwhile to have a communication regarding three points here, the positive steps taken by the new operator in terms of the odor reduction, and the dollars generated from the tipping fees, dollars saved by having the operation there for both our city residents and some of the other things you pointed out in the communication. And the metrics from the studies in 2016, and put that in on our website, just so that residents can be apprised of that, right? Because, you know, as it was mentioned by one resident that the odor was still very bad, but everybody I talked to said, no, I haven't smelled it in about a year, and personally I have not either. And I walk my dog frequently down that road the entire length, so. You know, let's get out to the tree lighting, hope to see everybody there, and happy Hanukkah as well.
Thank you. Mr. Leader.
First, I'd like to say thanks for all the Hanukkah wishes. Appreciate that. And I'd also encourage everybody to come out to the tree lighting ceremony. I'm interested to see how the one day and the new event schedule will change the dynamics of the event. I think it's going to be a positive experience for everybody. Also wanted to say, I was very impressed with the owner of Spurt Industries. I thought he was well-spoken, he was knowledgeable, and now I was impressed with his dedication to addressing concerns of the community, and I think that the ongoing relationship will be a positive one. And I can't say that I've always been impressed with people who've spoke, you know, on behalf of their things, but he was somebody who deserves recognition. And to all the rest of the Jewish community, happy Hanukkah. Yes, the MOT.
Deputy Mayor Beagle.
Thanks. I want to thank the scout troop for leading us in pledge tonight and with the grilling us on the questions instead of us grilling the audience. It was kind of different tonight, it was fun. We've got three employees celebrating work anniversaries this month, and want to thank them for their service to the city. Looking forward to seeing everybody Friday night at the tree lighting ceremony, and if they'll have me again, I'm looking forward to being at Breakfast with Santa and working that event. It's a great event that the fire department puts on, and I'm just, I'm pleased to be able to help you guys out with that.
Happy Hanukkah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, happy Hanukkah as well to our Jewish community and Mr. Leader in particular. And, yeah, a good meeting tonight. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Everybody go home.